Stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, today. Twenty-fourth meeting of the Planning Commission. And before we get started, I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your phones or any devices that would make noise during somebody speaking. So, Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Mr. Jamie Gerardi.
Here.
Mr. Derek Motlitt.
Here.
Mr. Peter Hansel.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. Richard Tannella.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Crick.
Here.
And could you read the proof of publication, please?
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on July 6, 2023, August 9, 2023, and August 13, 2023, or by affidavit of certified mailings, we thank you.
All right. Do we have any minute? I don't think we do. Okay. So, at this time, anybody who plans to give testimony today, if you please stand and raise your right hand, be sworn.
The sparrow's firm testimony you're about to give is the truth, so I'll be back.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone and tell you a little bit about the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we might meet twice monthly. Planning Commission serves the local planning agency and holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, Land Development Code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. Our final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, Land Development Code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where this Board recommends to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate county commission meeting. First, we will take public comment for items not on the agenda from persons or participants on WebEx or in person. And also, I wanted to state that we request that when you address the Planning Commission, whether it's in this segment or the following segments, that you address no one personally. You address the subject matter, and we'll do the same. But rather, this is, provides mutual respect between Planning Commission members and the public. If there, is there anyone in attendance for public comment on anything not on today's agenda? Do we have anyone on WebEx?
Mr. Chair, we did have someone who had signed up to speak for a public comment on WebEx, but that person is not on WebEx.
Okay. Thank you. In-person participants and participants attending through WebEx, including the applicants, well, who have pre-registered for Planning Commission meeting, will be notified by the county staff when they are ready to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes, and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved at least 24 hours prior to this meeting. In-person participants and WebEx participants must announce the following before speaking. At any time, they will be sworn by the clerk, which we've already done. We want to hear your name, your address, your agenda item number, or agenda item title. Then your three or five-minute time period will start. Okay, so today, we have 12 public hearing items on the consent agenda, two withdrawn items, and one continuance and non-consent items. So, I think with that, we can start.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. First item is PC-1, which is PDD 237581, DCH West. This is a withdrawn from consideration, no further action is required.
Okay.
Moving on to PC-2, PDD 230529, in the name of Hajka and Murad Kuchevic. This is also a withdrawn item, withdrawn from consideration, no further action is required.
All right.
So, we're going to move out of order, Mr. Chair. We're going to move on to item PC-7. I do want to say that it was advertised as an approval, but the applicant has requested a continuance, so if you would please call to see if there's any public comment. We don't have anyone who has signed up to speak nor registered on WebEx. It's PDD 237696, Greenfield Place West LLP, Greenfield Place West rezoning. It's for rezoning from AC Agricultural District to an I-1 Light Industrial Park District. The applicant has requested a continuance to the September 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in New Portridge.
So, this is not on consent, it's requesting continuance?
It's an item that was on consent that the applicant has requested a continuance, so it was an issue with advertising.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? All right. I see no objection. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to continue. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay.
Mr. Chair, we're now going to move to your addendum, APC-12, continuance. This is PDD 230401, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPAS 2305, The Crossing at Sunlake. There's a request from the applicant for a continuance to the September 7, 2023 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, I see no one. Are your motions?
Motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion of that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, the following item, PC-3, going back in the regular order, is pulled from consent. There have been some emails of objection that were received, so that one will be pulled from consent.
Okay.
So, moving on to item PC-4, it's PDD 237688, Abbey Crossing CC MPUD. Jeffrey Hurst and Margaret, I'm sorry, Hustt and Margaret Hustt. It's a rezoning from an AC Agricultural District to a Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of 1,000 multifamily units and 800,000 square feet of light industrial, 400,000 square feet of office, and 400,000 square feet of commercial retail on 245.24 acres. Comes through with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay, and is that applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Mr. Chair, have you got a conflict on this one, say you may want to take it now?
Okay. Okay, so we have a conflict of interest, so you'll be abstaining?
Yes, sir.
That's, yeah, Chris Poole, Commissioner Poole. So... That's going to remain on consent, so, but we want to vote on it separately because there is a recusal. So, let's go ahead and make a motion on that one. PC-4, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion of the motion? If not, all signify by saying, well, let's have a roll call vote. In favor?
Mr. Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Mr. Derek Motlitt.
Aye.
Mr. Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Mr. John Moody.
Aye.
Mr. Chris Poole.
Not phoning.
Mr. Richard Tannella.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Crick.
Aye. Okay.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to item PC-5, PDD 237728, zoning amendment in the name of Catholic Charities Housing, Inc., Catholic Charities Multifamily Housing. For a change in zoning from R1MH, Single Family Mobile Home District, to an MF1, Multiple Family Medium Density District, comes through with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present? Okay. Anyone here to object? I see no objections. Okay, next.
Moving on to PC-6, PDD 237701, zoning amendment in the name of Dignity Funeral Services, Inc., Michaels &amp; Lundquist. For a change in zoning from an MF1, Multiple Family Medium Density District, and C2 General Commercial District to a C2 General Commercial District. And the applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction that limits the uses to specifically commercial uses. This is the deed restriction that we all know as the Live Local Act 1.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Did I see, oh, okay, I see you back there. Anyone here to object? Okay. Keep moving, I guess.
PC-8 is PDD 237644, zoning amendment in the name of Legends Point Phase 3, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, KB Homes. For rezoning from a C3, Commercial Light Manufacturing District, R4, High Density Residential District, and AC Agricultural District, to an MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, to allow for the maximum development of 275 single-family dwelling units. Comes through with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
We're going to move on to APC-11 on your addendum package. And that item is PDD 230094. It's a Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPAS 2222, Moon Lake Road Commercial. Providing for a Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the future land use map 2-15, Sheet 11, from RES6 Residential, six dwelling units per gross acre to COM commercial on approximately 3.39 acres of property located on the west side of Moon Lake Road, two miles south of State Road 52. You're sitting as the LPA on this item, and we're asking that you find it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like that one pulled.
Okay. So, that's pulled from consent.
And that is the end of your consent agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve items PC-5, PC-6, and PC-8.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion of the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you want to take up PC-3 now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. While the PowerPoint is being brought up, PC-3 is PDD 237717, in the name of Lutes Church of God. It's for a special exception for a church in an R1 Rural Density Residential District. The parcel of land is located in South Central Pasco County, on the west side of School Road, at the northernmost intersection of Land O' Lakes Boulevard and School Road. The applicant is looking to develop the property with a church. It's in the ROR portion of the property, is Retail Office Residential, and the greater part of the property is RES3, Residential 3 Dwelling Units per Gross Acre. So, the property is located in the central market area, it's not within the urban service area or the rural area. This is like a, showing you the surrounding area of the property. To the north of the property is Edmondson Electric. To the east of the property is School Road. To the south of the property is vacant with some wetlands. To the west of the property is Lake Thomas, and the, some of the areas that you see surrounding it are, you'll see the Heritage Park of Land O' Lakes. And this is a county-owned piece of property that some folks use as overflow parking for the park. And this is Edmondson Electric and Land O' Lakes Boulevard going, and School Road on the east. And as stated, it's Lake Thomas to the west, so this is Lake Thomas here, or Thomas Lake. Showing you the future land use, which is RES3, a portion of the property along the front. Over in this area is ROR, Retail Office Residential. Surrounding zoning is C2 to the north, the subject site is zoned R1, and R1 to the south, and some C2 to the east. It's eight and a half acres. The applicant is looking to develop the property with a church, and as stated, the surrounding property is commercial, some residential uses, and the Land O' Lakes Heritage Park. And the recommendation is approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. I know there's some folks here who would like to speak to the matter, and there was an email of objection sent to the Planning Commission members yesterday, and it was also sent to the clerk's office.
All right.
And here for any questions, and the applicant's representative is here as well.
Okay. So, are the applicant's representatives here? Okay. Do you have, you want to say anything, make a presentation? I don't, thank you, you requested extra time, did you, Shelley?
No, no, we just, we were aware we were going to get pulled into last night, so, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, I have been sworn. I'm here to answer any questions. I did read some of the questions that came in through the email from the resident, and I think they're easily answered, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, we're just withhold then. All right, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to ask questions?
Mr. Chair, we do. We have Jim Stevens signed up, Wayne Hicks signed up, and Danny Ash as well.
Okay, if you want to come up in that order, that would be fine.
Hi, my name's Jim Stevens. I live at 5405 School Road. I sent you the summary for nonconformity. I guess you all have that, I brought copies of it.
Okay.
If you'd like them.
Want to submit something to us?
I'd like to submit them.
Okay. We have to give it to the clerk. Do we have to accept?
Second.
Motion receive and file in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Okay, today, I'm just here to talk about the impact that this church will have on the residents. There's only a handful of us that live here along School Road. I've been here for 32 years. Along with this church, by itself, probably wouldn't affect much. We already have a church with a full school, all the way up to high school. It impacts the road traffic, the noise in the morning. We have Sanders Elementary across the street, which is extraordinarily loud. The traffic backs up all the way down School Road, all the way out to 41 in the mornings. So, the traffic impact is going to be extreme. And I understand that a church typically only affects on the weekends. Well, the Heritage Park has events almost every weekend. Sunday mornings in particular, I-9 football comes out there and plays, starting at 7 o'clock in the morning with blaring music, cars parked everywhere. I think it's a little bit much to be asking the neighbors to constantly put up with this. It's not once or twice, like when I first moved out here, they had the Flapjack Festival, it was four days out of the year. Other than that, that park was pretty quiet. That's easy to put up with, but when it's every single weekend, every night of the week, we have cheerleading practices over there now, the noise and traffic has just gotten out of control. So, it's not specifically to speak against this church, but the impact this church is having along with everything else. When you look at the amount of money that this church spent, $847,000 on 2.9 usable acres, why are they doing that? This morning, I spent a matter of 10 minutes looking up three properties within three miles that are by far more appropriate. They're in residential areas, but not with the impact that this would have on the School, on School Road, that's already there. And by far cheaper, one is $50,000 per acre. It's been for sale for quite some time, I'm sure it can be bought for a lot less than what this one was. Beyond that, this property not only affects School Road, it affects all of Lake Thomas. Lake Thomas is already an impaired lake by the state guidelines. They have no intention, or they aren't showing any at this time for any kind of drainage plans. They have, the plans for the buildings are shown on wetlands, so they're going to negatively affect the lake. And at this point, there's nothing to stop them from using it as a public access into that lake, which in the past history, we have shut down multiple times, trying to keep that lake as a private lake. So, they're going to affect the ecology of the lake and the lake itself, and everyone around that 165-acre lakes' well-being.
Okay. Thank you.
So, how will the church be affecting the ecology of the lake?
So, according to their plans now, they're, they have no drainage ponds, they're building on top of wetlands. There's only 2.9 acres that are shown as non-wetlands. And that 2.9 acres that they're showing, I've been on that property, when it's ankle-deep in water. It holds water all the time. Same thing with Edmondson, that's north of that. That property should never have been built on. It was seven foot below 41. They claim that there was no fill put in. Kind of hard to do when it's level with 41 now, and it was seven foot below before that. Again, I've been there for a very long time.
You know what the net improvement standard is?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, so, I want to try to assuage your fears of them affecting the pollution levels in the lake. The lake is currently impaired for nitrogen, phosphorus, and chlorophyll A. That's usually the result of people using fertilizers and things on their yard. When this church goes to develop, it's going to be required to get a stormwater permit from the Southwest Florida Water Management District.
Yes, sir.
And as part of the design for their stormwater permit, they're going to be required to demonstrate that they're going to discharge less nutrients to the lake in the post-development condition than in the pre-development condition. In other words, they're going to be required to do something to improve the water quality of the lake. Whereas if this were developed with a single-family home, they would not be required to get a permit, and they would actually degrade the lake.
I fully understand that, that they will have to meet more than what's being shown today. Today's just a preliminary here, fully understand that. Just like Edmondson Electric, when they developed that, they were supposed to take all of their deliveries off of Highway 41. Today, zero of their deliveries come off of Highway 41, they all come off of School Road. So, what's to stop this from doing this?
That doesn't have anything to do with the church, and the church hasn't done anything to pollute the lake because they're not there today.
Are they going to have access to the lake?
They are not allowed to, under our code, impact category 1 wetlands. They can have some sort of path through those wetlands to access the lake, but I don't foresee them having a public access to the lake. That would be way beyond the scope of an application to construct a church.
Well, a church has a public showing up to there, so what's to stop them from having some sort of event and them all accessing the lake?
Well, then, wouldn't they be applying for a permit for some type of marina or something like that? I mean, I'm, what concern do you have with accessing the lake?
It's not just my concern.
I assume that people that live along the lake have docks along the lake.
That they do.
Okay, so, why shouldn't the church be allowed to have an access to the lake? And I'm sure that the homeowners don't allow the public to use their docks to access the lake, and this is going to be private property, I can't imagine a church would do that.
Is it your concern that the people that are going to church, the parishioners, because it's a larger group of people than what would be in a single-family home, accessing the lake through a church function or something like that?
Correct. It's just like, I know, it's a Baptist church right down by Avila in Hillsborough County. They have events there all the time, boats, people, all types of things, accessing that lake. That's what this lake and all the people that I've been able to contact around this lake, not one person is in favor of this development, not one. For that very reason.
They'd have to construct a path through those wetlands.
There is a path there.
But...
And it's dry.
But they can't build a roadway.
Right.
Right, no, no, sir, there's no roadway, but there is a pathway down there that it's dry.
And they would tell you they'd have many challenges if they wanted to try to construct a boat ramp or anything like that.
Right.
Right. They have a path that they can launch boats on.
Even a dock would require a permit.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Johnny, you phone? Yeah?
No other questions.
Hey, Derek?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, who was next on that list?
Wayne Hicks. Wayne Hicks.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm basically here as a resident of Lake Thomas.
I'm sorry, Wayne?
My name is Wayne Hicks. My address is 20916 Reagan Lane. That's in Land O' Lakes. I live on the north side of the lake. I basically support James Stevens' concerns, as all the other homeowners have expressed to me. My family bought their property in 1947, so we've been there a really long time. We've watched the quality of the lake degrade just simply by building. I share the same concerns. If the church builds there, I feel like it's going to negatively affect the ecology of the lake. Things are placed, like you said earlier, Mr. Chairman, that they would prevent that from happening, and that's all well and good. But if they get a mutual boat ramp, there's nothing to stop 140, and this is just a guesstimate, parishioners from launching boats into the lake. We don't want a safety problem on the lake. We don't want any more pollutants. It's been a private lake since, I know, since 1947. I can't voice my opinion any farther past that, but I distributed paperwork around, and over 80 people, and 19 of them I've personally talked to, and not one person's in support of this that lives around the lake. We all have the same concerns. So that's about all I've got. Jimmy covered just about everything else. He distributed some information that I also brought, but there's no sense in redistributing it, so.
All right, are there any questions from up here?
I have one question. If you don't want the church, this piece of property is going to be sold at some point in time. What would you object, what would you not object to, that development?
Of, right now, to even access that lake, it's probably over 60% wetlands. So they're going to have to cut down multiple, multiple, multiple Cypress trees, which I understand is against the law. I mean, I, I've got Cypress trees in my property, and I was told I can't touch them. So why can somebody else come in and build a 12,500-square-foot church? This is obviously going to have to remove Cypress trees to do or access that lake.
Sir, I'm not sure you're answering this question.
No, you didn't.
The question is, what use would you, would you support on that property?
Remaining a residential. One person's not going to affect that much, but the potential of 100 people, you know, accessing the lake, that, that could. Plus all that construction fill, it's, that water's got to go somewhere. You know, right now, I'm already suffering from the, the housing that has been built around me. My lake property never flooded. In the entire time I was growing up there and lived there, it's never flooded. Now, I can walk in ankle-deep water. And I can only attribute that to the runoff is, it's got nowhere to go anymore. You know, just because of building, but.
And none of the single-family homes were held, are held to the same standard that the church will be to construct? In other words, in the times when these single-family homes were built, you could go in and you could fill in a floodplain, and there was no requirement to mitigate for the volume lost in the floodplain. That's a requirement that'll be imposed upon the church. At the time these homes were built, there was no requirement for them to provide a stormwater management system. So you have runoff, generally it's the fertilizer from your own yards running off into the lake. The church will be required to meet all the current standards, which actually require a net improvement in water quality, not a degradation. It seems like the objections I hear were, seem to accuse, make the accusation that the church is going to do something to pollute the lake. The church isn't here. They've done nothing to pollute the lake. The lake's already polluted, and they're going to be required to make an improvement. And if they encroach into the floodplain, they're going to be required to mitigate for that encroachment into the floodplain. That's something none of the other property owners around the lake have had to do. Okay.
Same thing goes with Cypress trees.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, David, go ahead.
So, sir, just to clarify your objection as far as them accessing the lake, are you talking about boat access to the lake? Or if they built a path with a observation deck where they could just look out at the lake, are you objecting to that too?
Have no objection to that.
Couldn't they launch a kayak?
Have no objection to that.
So your objection is to motor, motorized access to the lake?
Yes. That could be threefold. I've seen it in Hillsborough County.
Where, where is there a ramp that accesses the lake currently? For anybody that lives there, where they want to put their boat in, where, where can they do that?
There, there is no public, or are you asking for this specific piece of-
A pri, is there a private ramp anywhere on the lake?
No. Well, there's many private ramps.
Okay. I think you're asking if there's a public ramp. Yeah, so, but there's no public ramps currently?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so for this church to construct a, a public ramp, I don't think it would be feasible. So even if they were to construct this path somehow through a wetland and somehow construct a dock, it'd be very difficult for them to launch additional powered watercraft into the lake without having the ability to access it through a, their own ramp.
True.
Yeah, certainly wouldn't be able to haul a trailer back there with a boat on it and park it back there somewhere.
No, and the amount of clearing and filling that they would need to do in a wetland in order to accomplish that would require substantial mitigation cost.
It's all category-one wetland, so they couldn't impact them theoretically in the first place.
Right.
Yeah, part of the reason I asked the question is because it may be possible to have a pedestrian path that goes back-
Right.
-for observation purposes, but it doesn't sound like they have an objection to that-
Right.
-use. So, I mean, this is a special exception. The planning commission could impose a condition that there not be motorized boat access to the site. But that's up to the planning commission.
Most likely, they couldn't do it anyway.
Which I'm guessing the applicant would say they probably wouldn't object to that condition because they probably couldn't do it anyway. But we can ask the applicant that question.
Yeah. Well, I think we have one other questioner from the audience before the applicant comes back up. Anything else you'd like to add?
I have nothing further.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I think we had one more.
Yes, Danny Ash.
Danny, if you just give us your name and phone, and name and not phone number, address, please.
My name's Danny Ash. Phone number 813-486-1300.
Just your address.
Oh, my address is 5365 School Road. I live next door to Mr. Stevens.
Okay.
Been there 40-plus years. I want to point out that Electric Company on the north side of that property is not on School Road. That's Land O' Lakes Boulevard address, some commercial. You can see their red line goes out into the lake. And I think our perspective on that is that where I live, I have a neighbor on the north side that, there's two people living in that residence. They use the lake. My neighbor to the south side, there's two people living in that residence. They use the lake. Two people living in my, my residence, I use the lake. You're asking us, four properties down, to have a neighbor with a congregation of, do you know how many? I don't know how many, 300, 400 people. It's a little bit of a difference. I don't think the electrical company's going to care, but the residential people that live on School Road have concerns. I think if you address the use of the lake with the congregation, that would make a difference. They're going to have baptismal service down here. I don't think we'd be opposed to that. It's confined to the beach. But if it, if it turns into the Baptist Assembly Grounds, like they have there in North Tampa, I've been going there all my life. They have pavilions and boats and boat ramps and, you know, public swimming, basically. We don't have any public access to Lake Thomas at this time, and we'd like to keep it that way. And if you have a congregation of hundreds of people, it looks a lot like public access. So that's a concern. Mr. Stevens pointed out to me that you, they do launch boats there. I've been living out there 40-plus years. And I've seen a number of people that either were renting or live in that house that have used the property just like we do, just like the rest of us do. We don't have any concerns about that. You asked, what would future use for that property be? Residential. Build a mansion on it. It's eight acres here. But you're still going to have a family, two, three people, and not a congregation of hundreds of people. So I guess that's our point. I think that's my basic concerns, is use of the lake. The traffic up and down 41, it is extreme, but the park was there when I moved there 40 years ago. Baptist Church down the street was there when I moved there 40 years ago. Sanders Elementary School was there when I moved there 40 years ago. I'm used to what they've done. They are extremely noisy on that park. They knocked the stop sign down at Community Center driving School Road just down yesterday. They knock it down about once a month. There's going to be more traffic going around that curve. It's the trucks going to the electrical supply that's knocking the signs down. But there's going to be a lot more traffic going down there for that church for that same reason. There's one, one way to get in on School Road.
Right.
I don't know if you would know that, but 41 going south, you can't turn on the School Road. So everybody's got to go down to Community Center and make a right, go to the School Road and make a right to get down to that church or the electrical supply. So it sounds like my time is up.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming and expressing your concerns. Do we have any questions for this person?
I will say that I've lived there 40-something years, and I don't fertilize my yard. It's green.
Okay, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Nobody on the list?
That's it.
Can I ask a question, staff? Is School Road a collector road?
Come on up, Shelley.
Give the transportation folks on here that can answer that question.
So according to your agenda memo, it's a local road.
It's a local, okay.
That's what condition, fact two says.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, that's correct. School Road is considered a local road, and it is, thank you.
Okay, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, I have been sworn. To address the drainage issue, obviously, is what, what John is saying. A lot of these are site-related issues, site plan-related issues. But as far as the lake, there is no current path on this property. The lake, the entire back end of the property is a Class 1 wetland, as y'all can see. They may put a path in there and some type of a little observation dock, but there's no intention to use motorized boats. So if you want to add that as a condition, I don't think my client has an objection to it if it provides some comfort to the residents, because that's absolutely not the intention. It's, he's talked to Swift Mud. Apparently Swift Mud's told them maybe they could have a little path through there and, you know, but, a little dock, but that's about it. I mean, he's not, they're not going to be launching boats or anything like that. That's not the intention, so.
Okay.
So can I ask one more question?
Sure.
On the traffic, are your services primarily on Sundays?
Yeah, so we are under all the thresholds. I think Libby Rodriguez is the traffic engineer on the, on this development, but I think she put it in for 12, 5. Right now, it's just probably going to be a 6,000-square-foot, that's what they're planning for, sanctuary. But it's all under, yeah, it's under all the thresholds. It didn't trigger anything.
The reason I'm asking is because this Sanders Elementary is not going to be operating on Sundays, so I'm not sure that the total traffic on a Sunday is going to be significantly increased because Sanders, Sanders Elementary won't be-
Operating.
Operating on Sundays, but-
Are they proposing anything like, you know, preschool or daycare?
Nothing, it's just the sanctuary.
That's the sanctuary.
Yeah.
Just the weekends.
So Denise-
Yeah, just on Sunday, I think it was 50 trips.
No affiliated school.
AM, PM peak, no, yeah. So that, it's going to be different times than when it's-
Denise, if they wanted to do a school or daycare-
They would have to come in for a special exception. They specifically stated-
That's a separate approval.
That's correct. They specifically stated at their pre-app that they were not doing a daycare or a school.
Right. We would have to come in and amend if they were going to do anything like that.
Right, which would be the only thing that would affect traffic, so.
Right.
So there's, there's some mention too, it's on the survey, of the single-family residents on the property? Is that still there?
There's a vacant residence on that property. No one lives in it. There is no path to the lake right now. And then there's two vacant parcels on both sides of the property, and then the electrical, the Edmondson's Electrical on the north side right there at 60, at School Road and 41, so.
What's the plan for the single-family residences on the property now?
I'm not really sure if it's going to be demolished, if they're going to raise it, or, this is Pastor Tyson.
Hello, thank you for hearing us today. Pastor Prater, 5513 School Road. What was your question again?
Regarding the single-family structure that's on the property now.
It's just, our plan is for it to remain. It's about 900 square feet. We just use it right now. We have some of our equipment, things stored in there. And occasionally, I have some meetings in there with like my pastor's council or things of that nature. But we don't really have any plans to live there or anything. I, I live in Lake Pageant myself personally, so I have my own home.
Okay. Yeah, so church offices, basically?
Yes, right.
So are, are your services only on Sundays, is that correct?
We have Sunday mornings, and then our youth group meets on Wednesday nights at 7:00 PM for about an hour, from 7:00 to 8:00.
And how many people are in the youth group?
Right now, there's like 10.
But you said that's 7:00 to 8:00 on Wednesday nights?
Yes, sir.
That's well after school traffic or-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Because you do really, yeah, that bottleneck down there at School Road is difficult. I, I have the pleasure of having to go through there on almost a daily basis.
Oh, absolutely. I see it when I'm there at 9:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Shelley, do you have anything else?
If you have anything else for me, I'd be glad to answer.
No, I, I understand from your attorney that you don't have any objection to being restricted from motorized traffic on the lake.
No, sir. No, no objection at all to that.
Okay. All right, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to hear a motion, but I'd like to have it include that restriction.
So if that was a restriction, I think the language would be something like, "Motorized boat access to Thomas Lake shall be prohibited." Does that cover it, Denise?
Yes, that's exactly what I wrote.
Okay, oh, I guess we think alike.
Scary.
All right, so I make a motion to-
You shouldn't be charging lawyer rates.
I make a motion to approve of that restriction.
I will second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have two issues with it, and I will vote no. One is, I know the area well, and I have a concern about the traffic. I know School Road is a difficult road at times. And the other one is compatibility with the community itself. I heard the three people, and I know some folks that, I know the area. And based on my knowledge of the road and the area itself, I think that the compatibility is a concern to me, so I just wanted to share that with the folks.
Okay, great, thank you, Peter. All right, so we have a motion, and we've had discussion. Is there any other, other discussion? And we have, we've had a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, you're all set. No motors on the lake.
So, Mr. Chair, we can move on to item PC 9, or we could take up APC 11, however you'd like.
9's fine.
Okay, so Patrick Dutter will be presenting items PC 9 and PC 10.
Do I need a break? Are you okay?
I can hold it.
Yeah, let's just take a break. Take a five-minute break. Take a five-minute break.
Yeah. Too much coffee.
Apparently, you needed one.
I'm, I'm blaming it on Chuck, though.
Saw Chris was here on Tuesday. I knew there was no chance he was coming over here again today.
Clerk.
Because that, we had that one on the agenda that the board owns the property.
I saw one of that one.
That affordable housing project next to Ankle.
Yeah.
You know, I got called into a meeting on that, and I came back and it was being continued for two weeks.
It was being continued because Barbara's client was not comfortable with the language about them not utilizing the tax exemption. They weren't comfortable with the way we were proposing it worded, so they wanted to run it by their affordable housing attorney. So it wasn't over a major.
Can't start because of Richard.
Because they acknowledged they weren't going to use the tax exemption. They just wanted it worded properly.
Don't ever do another reset.
That lady's in Contessa. She seemed pretty.
Actually, a really good applicant. They had their stuff together. Well, Barbara didn't have to do anything.
Yeah, I know. She sat here.
I was watching her, and I was like, was she a land use attorney? She's making the compatibility argument.
Well, Barbara did say she has, she does it all, so she was right. They definitely had their act together.
As opposed to the other guy that.
Yeah, the other guy was a little more loosey-goosey.
Yeah.
Why are you lying to me?
I don't care. I don't care. We'll commit to that.
Sure. We ready, Denise? How old is Patrick Dutter?
Ready.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. Call me in the order again.
All right, Patrick Dutter. I'm holding. Patrick Dutter, Planning and Development. I have two expertises to hand to the clerk. One other's forthcoming. The forthcoming one is from Commissioner Starkey.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the first is PDD twenty-three zero four six nine Little Road Landings Commercial PDP. You'll be hearing an item just after this, which is an individual site plan within the commercial subdivision, but this first item is the subdivision itself. So the proposal is a preliminary development plan application for a nine-lot, non-residential subdivision. The existing condition of the site is masqueraded. I'm sure we've all driven past it in the last year or so, so we're pretty familiar with where it is. So this is a little bit unique. You normally don't see preliminary development plans or preliminary site plans in front of you, but part of the original zoning condition at the time imposed by the board was they wanted to see site plans for this area come back for review by the board and recommendation from a planning commission for those plans. So that's why I'm here in front of you today with the subdivision plan and then also with the site plan. Location, we of course know where it is, northeast corner of the intersection of Little Road and Ross Lane. Here's our location map, context map, just north of us, so I think we're all pretty familiar. Zoning district, as we can see, it's C-two. AC is to the east. We have Little Road is to the west, and the south is the Veterans Hospital. To the north, you know, there's the Wendy's and the Lowe's just north of it. Future land use, we have comm designation surrounding it. And this is what the preliminary development plan looks like. So this is showing the configuration of the lots, the access between the lots, access going north to the, basically behind the Wendy's, as well as an access going out to Ross Lane and to potential access locations out to Little Road. Of course, you're going to see the stormwater ponds there as well, but this is the preliminary development plan. And of course, the recommended action is approve the requested preliminary development plan application. And I'm here if you have any questions. The applicant and the applicant representative is here if you have any questions for them as well.
All right. So the applicant's present?
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Barbara Willhite. Yes, I know, I'm sitting in the back. Bad kids in the back. Eighty-six twenty-seven Graham Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, three-four-six-five-two for the applicant. So this is strange. I haven't done this in a very long time. In the old days, the board used to condition rezonings and say, well, when residents came, it's a great idea. We'll bring back the site plan to the board and the planning commission. Now it's playing out. We're like, whoa, this is interesting. So I don't know. I didn't see anybody signed up to speak, but I guess we can respond. I mean, this is the opportunity for the citizens. I think the board's intent when they put conditions on was for neighbors to come and ask questions or express concerns. Obviously, it's a preliminary development plan. If it meets the criteria, it gets approved. Staffs would have already approved it by now, and we'd be on our way. I would say that the only thing that's ever interesting when we meet with the neighborhood, we've met with the neighborhood on this client, and I have a client next door. Steve and I have a client next door that will come before you as well. They always ask about the Ross Lane and Little Road intersection. So this project is going to partner with the county and signalize that intersection. So I think maybe perhaps you don't see a lot of people here because we've met with them between these two projects, and they know that that's in the works. So I have my team here. Let's, maybe if you don't have any questions, see if anybody from the public actually has shown up. We'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay. If we don't have any questions, we'll ask if there's anybody here from the public. Is there anyone here from the public that's here to speak on this item? Okay. I guess you've done a pretty good job.
Can I ask Barbara Patrick just one question? So I don't know if anybody was even here in nineteen ninety-eight that's still here, but.
Me.
Well, I understand. Well.
I started working here in nineteen ninety-six.
I mean, traffic, I understand why that was raised in nineteen ninety-eight, but do you have any idea why somebody raised buffering and noise? Was there a particular use they were worried about?
I think it's a holdover from the Lowe's. I think that these are the things that were expressed with Lowe's, and so when this one was rezoned, that would be my guess, my educated guess.
But do you know what the uses will be currently that you're planning for any of these lots yet?
No, not specifically. I mean, maybe the first, well, we're going to hear the site plan so they can explain what the site, our first phase is in, and you're going to hear that next.
That was going to be my question, too.
Okay.
But I really think this is just a holdover from, these were the concerns that were raised. I remember the Lowe's hearings that Steve Booth did when I was here, and so.
I was just wondering if anybody remembers what use to, because usually when you talk about noise and hours of operation, there's a particular use that somebody's worried about. And so I wasn't sure if the board was expecting us to do something related to noise or hours of operation for some particular use.
I don't even know how you really could do that in any event under your codes.
I mean, you can oppose, you can condition a site plan to rule, but it's pointless unless somebody knows what we were trying to.
Condition.
Condition, like, I mean, were they worried about an all-night bar? I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what.
We're not adjacent to the neighborhood. I mean, we're on Little Road, and then there's going to be a residential project that's pending now between us and any residences. So we're, you know, I really don't know how this came to be. It's a little odd. I can see if we are adjacent maybe, but we're not.
Can I add? Because I did read the transcripts because I was trying to figure out this condition and how we would, because it doesn't happen often. So the residents who came out in opposition had issues, as Barbara was explaining, with the Lowe's that was out there, and they were concerned that the types of businesses that could potentially go in there would have like deliveries that would happen like in the early hours of the day, and those back-sounding beeps and things like that. So they had concerns with those types of things. So Steve Booth, who represented this one as well, basically said, hey, it seemed like it wasn't going to go in a good direction based on the concerns from the residents. So Steve Booth said, well, we'll bring the site plans back so that there could be more of a public process and bring the site plans back to, back then it was the DRC and the Board of County Commissioners. So that was the conversations that were had as I read the transcripts to the nineteen ninety-whatever rezoning.
Okay, thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we have no one here from the public. The applicant has spoken. Higher motion. Drum roll, please.
I'll move to approve item PC nine.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on nine? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, so as previously discussed, we're going to be looking at an individual site plan. It's a combination of two lots within that subdivision. And the reason we're here is because that rezoning condition, any site plan, planning commission board wants to take a look at. So this project, PDD twenty-three zero four five one, Little and Ross, commercial phase one. The proposal here is a little less than twenty thousand square foot for two commercial retail buildings. As we know, the site has been masqueraded. It's before you because of that rezoning condition, and of course, we know the location. Here's the location map again. Here's our context map again. The zoning district, again, C-two. Future land use is staying the same. These are the, well, this is the site plan. So it was basically cut into two sheets. So this is the left side, I believe, and this is the right side. So this is the north side, and this is the south side. And you can see on the northern parcel development, you can see that cross access going in behind the Wendy's to make it out to that light out there. I can't remember the name of the light, or King, King Healy. Yes, the King Healy light. So that is the site plan. And then, of course, very important to a lot of commissioners is our landscaping. So I wanted to provide the landscape plan as well for review if anyone had any concerns. Again, this is already pre-reviewed by staff. Staff, like I think Barbara would have said, staff would have been approving this by now, but we have this condition that it needs to go to the board through the planning commission, so that's why we're here. So that is the landscape plan. And then, just to clarify, I know the recommendation says approve the simultaneous submittal of a preliminary site plan, construction plan, and stormwater management plan report. We don't necessarily need you to approve the construction plan and stormwater management plan report. The whole goal is for you to review the preliminary site plan itself. We don't expect you to have to dig into any of the detailed construction documents or anything like that. So I'll leave the landscape plan up just for any discussion purposes. Again, I am here if you have any questions, and of course, the applicant.
Patrick, I got a question. What triggers the connection to Ross Lane?
I will defer to our access team or potentially the applicants.
Okay.
I'm not sure which access team member.
I saw Essen's face earlier.
I know Essen's on, Stacy's on, Ben's on, so I'm not quite sure.
So good afternoon.
I'm here. This is Essen Clay.
My bad.
Did Barbara want to speak, or?
So the question was, I believe, what's going to require the access down to Ross Lane?
Yeah, I mean, it didn't look like there was any connection to Ross Lane. I just wasn't sure, and I did not see mentioned any of the conditions as far as when that Ross Lane connection will occur. Is that with the last or only the development of that corner?
So it's.
Right, so.
Barbara Willhite, it's in the PDP. It's in the prior conditions for the one you just approved.
Well, shame on me. I was going to ask it then, but I figured it was more applicable here, so.
Well, this one.
You want to go back to that?
Yeah, tell it, this site plan is all the way up by Wendy's. So it's the very first one.
Got that, sure.
So that's why, but the PDP staff made sure we addressed this. And condition number two in the PDP, the rear access drive connection to Ross Lane shall be constructed no later than the time that the improvements to the intersection of Ross Lane and Little Road are constructed. Not only did we have to make that, we actually had to put a date in here. Essen made us put a date in, so it goes on to say, "Applicant developer shall submit construction plans and applications for all required permits for the Ross Lane connection no later than September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and shall start construction within thirty days of approval of those plans and issuance of all required permits." So the thought is that we don't make the connection, and we have a companion that goes with this regarding the signal, right? So you look at four, condition four of the commercial PDP, talks about the signalization, so these really match each other. The thought is that this connection won't be made until the intersection signaled. And then residents requested that, by the way, when we met. They were like, you're not going to put more traffic on Ross Lane until it's signaled. We said yes, assuming the county would approve that, which they have recommended approval. So that's, and then we have a timing of that, when these things have to occur no later than. So I think we're pretty well buttoned up there.
Okay.
Lots of discussion regarding that, how that was all going to happen. So, good question. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Chairman Gray, this is Essen.
Okay, Essen.
Hey, I just wanted to make sure that Jamie got the answer. I just wanted to read out the.
You're cutting out on us.
Jamie, did you get your answer?
Yeah, I mean, I got the answer. That's fine. I was just trying to understand what was going on. That's all. I was answered, yes.
So the only thing I would ask, did you ask for public comment on this one?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I would ask is if whoever makes the motion, that you clarify that you're only recommending approval the preliminary site plan and not the construction plan and stormwater management plan?
Okay.
Because this will be approved by staff after the fact.
It was just kind of funny, like you're recommending approval of this but not that, makes it sound like you're not recommending approval.
The issue is those are not before the planning commission.
Thank you.
I'm not saying you're recommending denial of those other things, but your recommendation of approval to the board is for the preliminary site plan.
Correct. Just if somebody's listening to the tape 30 years from now.
I'm guessing that Mr. Moody and Mr. Girardi are not going to recommend approval of a stormwater management plan that we've never seen, so.
Don't want to.
This, this particular item contains the alternative standard for the parking on the drive aisle, correct?
This one does.
Okay, and that's included in the approval? Or we're not even reviewing that?
I think it is part of the preliminary site plan approval, yes.
Which was noticed.
Right, and it's mentioned in the memo.
Okay, any other questions? We have a recommendation?
Motion to approve.
And that's just the preliminary site plan?
With just the, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, clear that up, will you?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay.
Thank you.
There it is.
So we're going to move on to APC 11 and Erica Wenland will be presenting that item. Erica Wenland's Planning and Development. Item PC 11 is Seapass 2222 Moon Lake Commercial. For you today is a small scale comprehensive plan amendment from RES6, residential six dwelling units per acre to comm commercial to allow for the development of acre, of 3.9, 3.39 acres located on the west side of Moon Lake Road, two miles south of State Road 52. Here is a site location located in the central market area. Here's a context map, the subject property being the Red Star. Moon Lake Elementary being located on the west side of Moon Lake Road. Trails, the Caribbean Mobile Home Park located to the south. Baywood Forest subdivision located to the north and wetlands that surround the property. Here's an aerial with the proposed access point at Boatswee Drive. Here's the existing future land use for RES6 and comm, proposed future land use of comm commercial. The subject property met the conditions less than four acres in size for a comprehensive plan amendment to the comm flu classification under policy 1.6.4 neighborhood commercial uses. And with that, I recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right.
I can go through my agenda if you need me.
So can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
So is there a companion rezoning that's going to go with this?
Yes, and my applicant is here and she can speak to that with the Live Local Act.
Okay.
Okay, we need to approve this first.
Pardon me?
We approve this first before the companion.
No, it's, well, the applicant just wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not approving a rezoning today. I was just asking if there will be a companion rezoning.
Nancy McAmis, 10919 Moon Lake Road, applicant. What am I responding to?
Well, did you, did you submit a companion rezoning?
We will be, yes.
Will be, to, to CE2 or CE1 or what is it?
Oh, we want to do, we're doing, we want to do commercial because we want to do a small scale commercial and we want to do a open RV storage. I get very nervous talking in front of people. And so we're just following the process. This is new for us and we've been in Pasco County for 50 years. We've lived there, like 30.
So you want the RV storage?
Open RV storage on 3.39 acres or really it's going to probably be two and a half of that. That's all we want to do. The adjacent property is, we're going to leave it as our pasture land. That's our plan. Any questions?
The question that you'll probably get asked at the board level since you're going to commercial, are you willing to restrict the property at the time of rezoning to being just commercial and not?
That new bill that went in, yeah. We, for that 3.39 acres, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was just adding, I mean, I pulled it because I didn't know what kind of commercial it was and I didn't know if it was going to be like a strip center or something. So that was the reason, reason why I pulled it. So now that it's, you know, I know what it is now. It's fine.
Any other questions?
Would you be opposed to it being a strip center?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, because that, I mean, the, the land use doesn't restrict what is going to be, I mean, they can do anything in that. I mean, once it's land use zone, it can be anything.
Can you, a labyrin?
Pardon me?
Can you elaborate?
No, it's just, I mean, you, with the, the comp plan for a long time, they don't want strip development because you, you know, that's strip centers. Just think of those and they had them all along 19. You know, they, for some extent, they didn't have them along Little Road. And so I just, when I saw this, I'm like, oh, what are they putting it here for? And so that was the concern.
So I realize, can I speak? I realize if you approve this and it does say commercial, you know, you can follow the guidelines for whatever that is. If I needed a condition thing to say that I was only going to do my open RV storage, I'd be open for that if that was okay.
We can't condition a comprehensive.
Oh, okay.
That would be a rezoning and.
Oh, I see.
But since you are going to be, yes, since you are going to be doing a deed restriction for Live Local anyway, you could restrict it to particular uses in that deed restriction if you felt, if staff or you or the planning commissioner board felt that restriction was important. I could tell you they were going to, the board considers the restriction on Live Local important, so.
On what?
The Live Local Act restriction, I guarantee you the board will consider that to be important.
Affordable housing.
Yes, they're not going to want to see this become, commercial use become affordable housing. Whether you further restrict it to be RV and boat storage is, is probably something that can be addressed at the time of rezoning.
Well, I will get that little form, you know, that voluntary deed restriction to say that it's just commercial, to avoid that Live Local whatever thing.
And again, that'd be done at rezoning, it would be done now.
Correct.
You mean, right here and now?
No, no, no. No, when you come in to rezone the property to commercial.
Separate hearing.
Okay. I apologize, this is all new to me.
It's okay.
And I'm a school teacher, so I know, you know, some things, but not this. Definitely, I'm meeting with my lawyer next week and my attorney and we're, Erica already told me about it and I said, not a problem and we will have that taken care of.
Okay, well, if you're a school teacher, you know you're supposed to raise your hand before you speak.
Very much so, very much so. Okay.
Okay, you did great.
Oh, well, thank you. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Is there?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else from up here?
Did you ask for public?
I think I did.
I couldn't remember.
Did I ask for public comment? Is there anyone? I thought I did. Okay. If not, and if there are no other questions.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the comp plan amendment.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, like motion, the motion carries.
Okay.
All right, there's Essen here.
Mr. Chair, before you call to adjourn, I just want to welcome Patty Chris back to the team.
Well, it's about time.
So you'll see Patty Chris as your agenda coordinator until such time as we hire an agenda coordinator. So I just wanted to acknowledge that Patty's back and I'm sure that you all, no one loved Patty, so, yeah. So you'll be hearing from her for the next, who knows how long, a few weeks, I suppose. So, thank you.
So you're saying she'll have to put up with us for a few weeks?
And I guess we won't see Patrick Dutter for another 10 years.
Next time we get a conditioned Euclidean zone. Yeah. Patty's slumped down there in his chair. Okay.
Steve Booth's tactic worked.
Have we covered it all?
That's it? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good night.
Night.